Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six P. M., and I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. First, is actually I'm gonna kick it over to Board of Parks.
All right, so Agenda Item Number One, Presentation from Open Space and Recreational Advisory Committee. So, welcome.
Hi.
I'm gonna kick it over to you if you have something that you want to present to us, or...
Sure, so our committee has been working for the last, what, four years on getting the town to do an open space plan. We got that done. But now we're at the Agenda Items of the Open Space Plan, and in order to get those items done the way that we as an advisory committee are set up and the way that the town is set up to maintain their parks and push through parks, just isn't really kind of functional. And so, we thought long and hard, like, how could this become functional? How could we get the items done? And the best way to do it, when we looked at all the towns around, is to have a larger Board of Park Commission. So, a lot of towns in our area have either a three- or five-member board, and it's just like we did with our Board of Health. If you go to the next slide, right, we have done this in the past, Free Town, recently, right? We elected a Board of Health so that they could focus on Board of Health issues, so that they, we have, you know, an actual dedicated source for Board of Health-related issues. I think if we have a Board of Park Commissions, a group of people that are able to spend time solely on park commissions, will have more access for the community to come to a Board, to actually ask for things, will have more opportunity to do outreach, to do the events, to do all the things that are on our open space plan and that the townspeople have been asking for. But this seems like the easiest and only solution that we came up with.
Yeah, no, you know, I obviously have my questions, and I'm not sure if anyone else does, but what other towns in the area have recently done this?
So, let's see, what did we go through? There was like Lakeville, Marion. There's quite a few that have a Board of Park Commissions, and they're responsible for, you know, anything that's parks-related. So, if you go to our next slide... Not that one, next one, sorry. Uh, next one. It would basically look something like this, right? And that's sort of what we have at the moment, but, you know, even like tonight, you guys are gonna be talking about the port of pastures, right? And the control of port of pastures you're giving to the Conservation Committee, which seems kind of interesting, because they're more of an inspection authority, right? Like, they're supposed to be maintaining and making sure of our...
Yeah, no, they're, they're in charge of...
No, no, I get it.
They're in charge of the land and keeping the land to its right integrity, making sure that people do follow rules and regulations, but it is much more than just that. It's not just... So, yeah, I don't mean to cut you off, but I just...
No, no, that's what I'm saying. It seems like, it seems like, you know, like, we have, like, who's cutting the grass of all the parks?
The Highway Department.
Right, okay, and then who's maintaining all... So, that's what I'm saying, like, a lot of our functionality in our, our town is being split amongst multiple places, right? Where it seems like, well, maintenance of parks should be under the Parks Commission, right? But, like, you're not directly responsible for making sure all that happens. You have a lot of other stuff going on. Like, you guys have been talking about all sorts of issues that you need to, and I imagine that's exactly why you split the Board of Health away, so that the Board of Health could be specialized as well, right? It's not saying that you can't be on the Parks Commission, or, you know, all three of you couldn't be on. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that it's, for what we have been tasked with doing, the best solution is to actually make a Board that meets regularly, that hears from the town regularly, that is able to get these things done, you know?
And I, I'm not, you know, I think you guys are doing a great job, and commend you. But we do meet roughly every two weeks, and we're here, so we are here to hear from the town, you know, for, for what?
Okay, so, I'll, I'll give you an example, right?
If a resident, can I finish, please? I'm sorry. If a resident has a concern, they can come into us. So, you know, they can, they can come in and ask, so it's...
Are you aware of how long it took us to get in front of you for this? Because it wasn't timely, right? You also had a resident that wanted to do a dog park, right? And you sent them to us, and then they didn't get to you, right? So, what we have now, you, I know you, I get what you're saying. You're saying, hey, Board of Selectment is here, put in a petition, come talk to us. But this was months for us to get over here. Like, we did all this work months ago, and we finally got on your, your registry right now, right? Like, the Agenda today, that's months already. That shouldn't be happening. Like, if somebody wants to have an event, or somebody wants to inform us about something, or whoever, and I'm not saying us like me, right? I'm saying the town, they should be able to get on in a timely manner, discuss it in a timely manner, and then make changes in a timely manner, right?
Yeah, and I can't speak to what, you know, what the, the agendas look like, and sometimes, unfortunately, and I apologize that it did take that long, you know, sometimes our agendas are really full. So, you know, a presentation is a little bit different than asking about one thing. So, so I do apologize.
I'm not, listen, I'm not, I'm not looking for apologies, I'm not looking for anything. I'm just saying, like, that's, this is, this, you know, we were tasked with a, a job, we did that job. We were tasked to figure out how to get it done, right? And we've been, with our Board, we've gotten so much done, right? Like, there's been more events this year, there's been more communication this year. We've gotten the kayak stand, like, we've done all these things that, or been pushing for all these things for a long, long time, right? But the next step is, is this.
And, and I, I will also credit Kylie with that, right? Like, she's done a lot of the stuff and helped me move it forward. And, listen, I am all about doing this stuff, because that's, you know, there's something, it shows, like, all right, so recently, with everything that, with the concert series and everything, and how many people have showed up, it shows the willingness for people in this town to get out and participate in things, so I, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're crediting people where due. Just like I'm saying, we credit you guys for things that you've done, so...
Right, that, I...
So, so, I mean, we do have her now, too, that's, so that's a little bit different than it was a few years ago, so we have her coming directly to us.
Right, and we spent three years pushing for her to get a position. Like, that came directly from our Board pushing for her.
Okay, and I understand that. It's also a funding issue, right?
I understand that, too.
So, that, and that's part of the disconnect, right, is we, we only have a limited amount of funding to use, and, so, yeah, so, I mean, I don't wanna make this just about me, you know, if you guys have questions, too.
No, like, heck, I was, I was on your, your, your committee from day one, right? So, see where it's, where it was to where it's grown? I'm extremely proud of you guys. You guys have done enough admirable job moving this thing along. And I agree with you, there, what's the next step for you guys, right? Like, what's, what, what else can you guys do on this committee, right? So, essentially, what you're looking for, right, is what's the next step? You got, you guys have accomplished a lot, you have. The, the letter by the state is a massive undertaking, right? So, that's, I, I was at the beginning of that, and I know you guys pushed and pushed, you guys worked through, you got new members in. Yeah, no, I, what is the next step? Is it, I agree, is, like, I think that's the, it's a fair conversation to have.
My question to you is, you mentioned a couple of other towns that have these Board of Parks Commission. Do they have CPA?
I would have to look into, I would imagine, like, if you look at this...
Yeah, so they have funding separate, right? CPA is where they tax you additionally, and a percentage of your taxes goes into an account, and a portion of that is used for parks and recs. We don't have that, it's been voted down twice, I believe. I may be wrong on that, but I know we've tried to bring it to this town, it's been voted down. So, we don't have the same funding resources that Lakeville might have, or that Marion might have, to do this. We do, and we did have a Community Program Director that I believe was responsible for pretty much all of the activities that have happened at the park, both parks at this point. So, now, and, and you're saying you'd be responsible for mowing the grass, that's all wrapped up into...
No, no, I'm, so, I think we're getting confused here. I'm not asking for funding, I'm not asking for any of those things. I'm asking for the Board of Park Commission, which we already have somebody who is a Board of Park Commission, to be expanded, to be a Board, right? And to restructure the town and to do those other things, maybe that's part of it, but that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for us to be put on the warrant, what we showed you, to expand the Board of Parks Commission, right? And whether you wanna go further, I'm not saying that my Board should be this Board either, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that we should have more people representing the parks, that are focused on the parks, that are focused on making our town more community-driven. That's what I'm asking for. The rest of that, you guys can handle at some other point, but we're asking just for the Board. Can you remind me, when we did the Board of Health, was that by petition? Did that got on the warrant, or was that, trying to remember how that happened?
No, it was...
It was not a petition.
It wasn't petitioned?
No, it was an article that was just put forward, and then got voted on at town meeting, and then the ninety-day approval from the A.G.'s office. So, if that was...
Just out of curiosity.
It was a desire to go for October, Special Town Meeting in October, October twenty-first, ninety days out, it'd be the earliest that the A.G. would approve or, or accept or deny. You're looking already at January, and the nomination papers are already available the beginning of January. So, it exceeds that window. I just wanted to put that out there, if anyone was thinking that it could get on to April's election ballot, we may not have the time.
Gotcha.
So, this would potentially be a, if, if it goes forward, a two thousand and twenty-six...
Correct.
...ball initiative for in the, okay. Then, we'd have to move those two, not ball initiative, it would, it wouldn't be available till two thousand and twenty-six to vote on, all right? So, we have to change also the, you mentioned, Deb mentioned that it was voted down twice. We would have to change that first?
No, so that's the CPA, that's the Community Preservation Act, and I think the last time it went before the town was in two thousand and twelve, I believe.
Twenty twelve.
Yes, and then the, really, the issue would be then, if we don't have that, then they, we would have to give them funding, right? And then they would have to work off a budget for that, but...
I think everything would have to go through the Board of Selectment anyways, right? Because would they have the authority to sign contracts? I mean, we have funding from the town.
Nobody has the authority to sign contracts, except for the Selectmen.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. And I wanted, that's, that should be clear, right? We should all understand that, like...
But they would then control, depending on what the charge would be, right? That would be drafted, but if they control on all the parks and the recs, now we have... Then they will work and tell Kylie what she can and cannot do.
Because then, like, do we get into, like, the, all the baseball fields, and who does all that negotiations for leases, and then...
Yeah.
Because then, and then it gets messy, too, like, I know you, I know you're not specifically concerned about this, but like, we think about maintenance of different areas, right? Like, that's through the Highway Department, which rolls up to the Board of Selectmen, then if there's two different folk, you know, groups of people that have the ability to tell them what to do, right? Yeah, no, I, I totally understand that aspect of it, and I definitely think you have to think through that aspect. I'm just gaming, that's what I'm doing, I'm doing that a lot right now. I'm just trying to think through, like, what that means. I understand where you're coming from, and I understand what you're thinking, and yeah, potentially, that, that is, that, that would, I would think, actually, that would be something that you'd have to think about. For us, that's not something that we know or could know, right? Like, that's something that we'd have to, like, you mentioned, it has to go to the A.G., you have to do, that research has to be done, definitely.
I think Lakeville, too, Boron Parks, they don't lease their fields, they control their fields, they charge for the use of their fields, so they...
I think forty dollars a head per child.
Yeah, so they have a different revenue source, they have, they have funding to do some of these things because of the way they have structured their fields and their parks, and plus they have CPA. I believe, I'm pretty sure they do have CPA, which gives them a lot of funding, so...
Yeah, and that's why we have a laundry list of teams that are trying to deploy in town here versus, you know, get additional space here versus Lakeville, because they're being charged per person, per, you know, per individual, so...
So, I think, yeah, this is a larger undertaking than just the Board.
Yeah, I guess I ask these questions, and I don't try and sound negative when I say it, I just wanna make sure that if we do something, we do it right. Board of Health is a little bit different, it's a little bit more technical, don't take that offensively, but you know what I mean, they, they're dealing with a lot of things. We would get septic plant in front of us, and...
Have to approve it.
It's like, it's like...
I don't know anything about septic plants. I get it, I get it, but this is what I'm saying, it's the exact same thing, though. You've gotten questions, and you've pushed them to us, and then they're questions to us, and we go, well, we have no authority to do any of these things, and we can push it off, but then it gets lost, right? So, it, it's the exact same issue that you guys are talking about. You have other things that you have to learn about and think about and do. There needs, there should be five individuals that are very well-versed in parks, and if that happens to be controlling who cuts the grass and doing it, then we should do that. I don't see, just because it's hard, I don't think we shouldn't do it. I think the townspeople pay enough taxes, they deserve to have events and things happening, and they deserve to have somebody advocating for those, those community-building things. I mean, every survey that we've sent out, every single survey, there's been a huge portion of the populace saying, we want these things. Like, we see other towns having, we see Somerset having a field day every two weeks, why can't we have those things, right? And we've been pushing for them and pushing for them, and we finally got a summer concert series, and we finally got these other things, and people are flocking to them. So, why shouldn't we have five people that are very concerned and focused on just these issues? And you can be on that Board, too. Carlos is on the Board of Health, right? Like, I'm not saying nobody, and I'm not saying me, I'm saying five people who wanna spend the time and wanna do this job well should do it, and we should let the town vote on it. Put it on the warrant, let us vote on it.
Yep.
So, but I think, yeah, we probably have some time here to think this, kinda game this through. I don't wanna make any rash, I, I see what you're saying, and I think it makes sense, and following the same logic that we did for the Board of Health, like, we think that there's other people more qualified for it, so I think we definitely can go down this road and start kind of thinking this through and see what it really means, right? Make sure we're not, like, we actually ran into an issue with the Board of Health recently, where we didn't think all the way through what the, where the transfer station, who would be in charge of that? And now we're like, oh, like, it's a, kind of a confusing little situation, so I wanna try to avoid those type of, you know, not make any rash decisions, right? But I, I totally see what you're saying, and I think you're right, like, it's, it is amazing, just, I've seen, since, you know, this committee's been around, the amount of change I've seen in activities, it's huge, and it's awesome, and that's what our town's been missing, I think. You know, that sense of community is kind of really coming back together, which I think is great, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely something we should, we should investigate. Now, how do we do that? What are actual steps we can take to, you know, at least continue this conversation? So, that's something we gotta figure out.
Like, logically, I think the next step sounds like we have to look into the CPA and see what it takes to join, the pros and cons of that, and take it from there. It sounds like that's where the funding mechanism is for the other towns, right? So...
Yeah, I'd like to get some, like, maybe even talk to somebody from one of our surrounding towns that does have this, and just kinda get feedback and see what they say, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, do you, I'm sure we have some connections over there we can talk to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, you know, like I said, I know CPA is, is, in the prior town that I worked in, they had CPA, it's, it's wonderful, it does a lot of things for the town, because it's a percentage of your tax bill that goes into a fund that can be used. There's four categories that it can be used for, but one of them is parks and recs. So, all of the ball fields there, they would apply to the overseer and get the money to, you know, do the ball field work and whatnot, but I know that it, right, you know, it's not gonna be easy to pass in the town of Free Town, because it is a percentage that just gets added on to your real estate tax bill.
I guess I'm getting confused why we're tying the CPA with the Board of Parks, or with the maintenance that we're already doing.
What funding are you gonna have, you know?
But that's what I'm saying, we, we're already funding the maintenance, right? We're already spending the money to do these things, and we're not asking for new money, we're not asking for more money, we're not asking for any of that, right? So, you guys keep tying it to the CPA.
I see it as you wanna take the control away from the Community Program Director and then take it to you.
Not at all, no, no, because I see these people as volunteers, whoever's gonna be doing this are volunteers, right? And then they're not gonna have the time to go and run events, like, the Community Program Director is important, they need to be there, right? But I think that there should be a group of people that are, have a big-picture view and push for these better programs and these better things. This is not like a power grab, this isn't, uh, let's take this job. I, I have my own job, I don't need this job, right? Like, I want the community to get better, I want community involvement, I want community building, and I want five people that are focused on just that, right? Right now, we have one person who's focused on a lot of other stuff, rightfully so, but there should be more. So, why are we tying it to funding when it's already funded?
Because all of these things cost money, there is no more funding. We've spent all of the funding that was appropriated on the concerts.
Okay, so, somebody wants to throw some party at Hathaway Park, right? Right now, it has to come before you guys, you have to give up a permit, you have to do all the other stuff, it takes time to do that. Why can't we have a Board that's able to grant those approvals that's more accessible, right? That doesn't require any more funding. We already have somebody mowing the lawns, right? That money is taxpayer money, it's still going to pay somebody's salary to mow the lawns. I'm not asking for a new person to mow the lawns, like, that's why I'm getting confused that you guys keep talking about funding. We're not talking about, we're not talking about funding, we're talking about a Board that is five volunteers, there's no funding involved.
Any event's gotta cost money.
Well, I think the note there, too, is, is elected, right? So, I think right now, like, we have a Community Program Director who does a great job, but what if that Community Program Director had different interests than the town? Right now, the town doesn't vote on the Community Program Director, we vote on the position, but then it's ultimately a hired position, which can be great, but the needs of the town, town change, the people have a voice in our town, that's the way our town is run, we have a town meeting, we have to raise our tickets right in front of everyone about all kinds of issues. If we had an elected Board, essentially, there would be someone to partner with the Community Program Director, who is a paid person, but then there would be, these decisions would be made in a group way, so that townspeople could come and say, well, my voice is there. And then if you're not happy with how parks are being run or anything to the nature of open space in parks, when it comes up for election, you vote for other people, because the towns change, the townspeople change, the demographics change, families change, whether it's families get bigger and people move in, or people move out, so that's not necessarily gonna follow the same job description, but the elected people should be a reflection of the people that live in the town that are electing them. So, I think to Brian's point about just basically taking what you're doing anyway and expanding it, it takes pressure off of just one person who's the Board of Selectmen, and you guys have plenty of other, like, a lot of other roles. Even if the three of you were on the Board of Parks, there would at least be two other people that could support this, and then just operate in tandem with the Community Program Director, or if there's another position that's coming, right? We're funding that position, but you still wouldn't have to fund a volunteer group as a Board. And like Brian said, like, it's not a power, power grab, it's more of let the voice of the people, now that there's an open space plan, put that open space plan into action, because it is a lot of work, and it's not just something as simple as a committee, or for you guys to sit here and be like, let's look at the open space plan tonight, and what are the items, right?
Yeah, like, how often have you seen, like, have you looked at the open space plan? Have you looked at the Agenda Items and said, we're getting these Agenda Items done? Like, how often are you doing that?
Not recently, but I do look at it, I mean...
But that's what I'm talking about, like, if you have five people that that is their, their primary focus, there's gonna be more focus on it. We're not asking for money, we're not asking for any of those other things, we're, we're simply saying, let's expand the Board. And not even, let's do it right now, we're saying, put it on the warrant, let the people decide, and do all that research and do all the, if, if you wanna make it so that different positions report to different people and, and the internal structure, you've got plenty of time to decide that, right? If, especially if elected positions, where it's not gonna happen until two thousand and twenty-six, it's two years to figure out the flow of everything, right?
Yeah, I...
It would have to be written out in the, in the article.
Was that, sorry?
That would have to be written out in the article, the warrant article, and what, what the task is gonna be and what falls under their jurisdiction, so it's...
Well, like, the Board of Health has a, a health agent, right? But that's not written in, that wasn't written in the warrant, right? So, I'm, I'm naive to it, but...
It was pre-existing.
So, wouldn't that be similar to Jared, being pre-existing as a Board of Parks person?
No, I think you're talking about the Community Program Director, she's, she's pre-existing, and that, now you're saying, change who she reports to, I don't think that's even fair. You know what I mean?
Is it a change?
You're gonna get a new boss.
Well, those are the things, like...
No, that's what I'm asking, like, is it a change?
Couple of loop, like, Board of Health, first the transfer station, talking, there are things that, when the decision was made, or when it was elected on, there was things that was over, was an overthought, right? We didn't think of until just recently popped in his head. So, the question there is, since we do have a Community Program Director, that was based largely on the conversation we had back in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, right? Like, in those ti, in those times, so, so, yes to that, but her reporting structures to the Board of Selectmen, that's largely based off what your open space plan is, is saying, right? A lot of the stuff that's come out is really rooted in, based on that, right? And plus whatever surveys that were put out there. So, now moving forward, how's that change, right? Then we talk, keep talking about grass, to put that to bed, let me just say that the grass is cut only in certain parks, not all the parks, right? Because, because of the way it's set up now, without CPA, a lot of, a lot of the organizations in town raise their own money, bought their own equipment, and cut their own grass, because it's consistent, versus having the town do it, maybe they leave the clippings behind, it just makes it cleaner. So, that's the grass conversation, but I understand what you're saying, right?
No, I mean, it, it comes back to the grass conversations, like, shouldn't you have a group, five people that are able to make sure that it's consistent? Like, have people that are able to, like, you know, think about these things? Because, like, honestly, like, if I was you guys, and, and I have somebody yelling at me about Excel and some, the pipes and all this other stuff, you're not thinking about grass clippings, right? But if that's my only responsibility is to think about grass clippings, then I'm gonna think about grass clippings, right? Like, I mean, that's, that's literally what we're trying to get to, like, if you have more manpower, I'm just saying, let's have more manpower. And it sounds like you guys are like, I don't want more manpower, which just doesn't make sense to me. No, I, I don't, I don't, I just wanna make sure, real clear.
Yeah.
I'm not for or against this, I'm just, this is my first time digesting this, I'm just trying to think it through, just to see, you know, what my recommendation would be. At the end of the day, right, even to say if we didn't put a warrant up, you guys can go get a petition on the warrant and, and move that forward, right, hypothetically, so it's like, we don't have that much control over any of this anyways, right? I just wanna, I just wanna be, just wanna make sure we make the right decision, it's in the best interest of the town, right? So, I'm sorry. Can't work messages.
And I guess that's what I'm trying to say, too, is like, I don't wanna sound negative, but I don't like doing things half-hazardly, right? So, you know, we're talking about different things up here, and then, you know, different concerns that have popped into my head initially, and, and as well as someone actually reaching out to me today, asking about it. So, so people do notice things and ask questions and, you know, whatever, so...
Right, I would just wanna give more people an outlet, more outlets to ask these things. I mean, I know when I run into people at, like, Hathaway, and they ask about what events are happening, what things are going on, can we have more of these things? Like, I, I get those questions, right? I have my, my daughter with me, and we go down the slide a bunch of times, and they ask me about, like, oh, were you guys gonna partner with a family day? And you're, like, these things they want, right? So, why not give them a place, a sounding board to go and ask for these things?
I think you've asked me on some of these things in the past, and I think I directed you to the Community Program Director to speak with her and to try to come up with field days or have whatever days you wanted to do.
Right, definitely.
Did you work on that? I mean, did you do that?
Yeah, we've, we've contacted her, and we've talked to her, and we've invited to our meetings, and we've had conversations with her in, and the PTO. I'm not just saying, like, like, this is just for events, that's not what I want. This is, like, we're trying to expand the Board so that we can do all the things that Like, we're trying to expand the boards so that we can do all the things that we have. Like on our, it's not just events. In our open space plan, right? It's also the maintenance of parks, opening like port of pastures, making it usable. Having more um kayak stands, having more trails, having a map of the trails available to people. Communicating these things out. And yes, we've had these conversations and that's largely why we put that out there, right?
As an open space committee, you can work on those things. You're going to have to get funding for them, but you can work on them. There's grants for trails. There's grants for things. So there are certainly things you can work on as an advisory committee that you don't need to be commissioned to do.
So we're not. It's. More so being able to put our foot forward for those things. Having that expanded and and I'm not saying me, right? I I really want to make sure that you're not looking at this like. This committee, we want to become that committee. I don't think we do, right? I think that there should be people that are available to push forward these things long after I'm gone. Right? Because at the way that it is now, the push for it is being blocked a lot of times. So even if we push for it and push for it and push for it, look how long it's taken us to get what we've gotten, right? This is just the next logical step. And it's not for me, it's for the town. It's for the town to have people to go to, the resources to actually expand and to continue to. Push for these betterments.
If I may, the um, this is, this goes back to the open space plan. This was the first item on that, on that plan.
To set up a.
Was to become a.
Commission?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a citizen, um, I've been listening to the two groups here and there seems to be that. You you're you're wondering about the commission. My suggestion would be that we have an appointed. Uh, parks commission. That way the Board of Selectmen have the appointment power. But they give the authority to someone other than, other than them to make decisions on parks and recreation. Uh, there's different chapters and sections of the law that's set up such committees. And I think it'd be good to uh have someone investigate how either either or. And maybe then the the uh voters could decide what they want to do. But it seems to me that the way to expedite. This matter and not wait for maybe two years is to uh think of that. Then if there's something goes wrong and the town administration, the Board of Selectmen uh decide they want to. Do so uh they can't work with their commission. They they go out and get other commissioners. And then the other thing is that I think a lot of people who may be interested. In parks of recreation might not want to go around, uh, you know, knocking on doors.
Campaign finance laws.
Just knocking on the doors to get people to sign.
So is that something as a as a actionable item to be have council look and see like? Can we de- what I guess what del- task can we delegate to a commission, to an appointed commission? Just to give them, you know, some more authority, I guess, to. We have to really articulate what that is though.
I I I would, I would say if if they're interested in putting an article on the warrant that they submitted.
Yeah, you could do that too. How many, how many um? Signatures for this would be?
A hundred.
Hundred? Is that what it always is? I don't know.
A hundred for the special town meeting, but I mean, they could.
Why would they need to go out?
I don't mean especially, I said, just submit it. Like, we have other departments.
Yeah, there is an article for the warrant here, but I I don't in this.
You know, and then we would, then we would send it to town council, mark it up, change it. Present it to the select board. The select board could approve to push it through or not.
Okay, that that seems like an actual next step. But I do like the idea, like, like we should investigate Charlie's idea there of.
Yeah, I mean, we put elected just because that's what we saw. And then we also looked at the chapter forty-five law, which is the law that. Is all about parks commissions. And we just basically mimicked exactly what we saw from. Yeah, so this is actually what we did for the Board of um, the Board of Health. That's the actual language that we use for the warrant for the Board of Health. And we just substituted, uh, you know, the MGL law for Board of Health. With the actual MGL law for parks commission. And then we just moved the parks commission. So this is exactly what we would submit to you to.
With the edit of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, change it to twenty twenty-six if that's the only time available. But I mean, that's exactly what we would submit to you. And that was the whole reason why we put this in, but we did this again months ago.
So we could change it and make it appointed if that's what the selectmen wish. So we could bring this in front of the selectmen in a different meeting and then. You can vote on it. It's not on the agenda to be voted on.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, all right, well, this was good. And we'll uh, so we could submit this to council for review. And then it will get, have to get re- put back on our agenda to get approved, uh, or, you know, voted on. So I think that's an actual next steps.
What do you think the timeframe would be like that? I'm just wondering if we're trying to get this on for twenty twenty-six, which means it has to be in the October thing. And it took us. Two, what was it, three months to get out here, like?
Yeah, I shouldn't, we shouldn't.
Well, I mean, I think it depends on this, the the selectmen.
I agree, I, hey, I understand, like, like this would be low totem pole for me, but again, that's just.
Well, keep in mind, if it's twenty twenty-six, it could be in October of this year or the June of next year, it'll still be voted on ju- of June of March or April twenty twenty-six.
This October, you could still go through the um open submission process for the June town meeting. And it would still allow you ample enough time to go to the AG's office, possibly get approved to be on that April twenty twenty-six. So it does, you you don't have to cut yourself short and and rush to get it on October. Because whether you have it on October or June. So it might behoove you to kind of put a little bit more thought to really fine tune everything that you want to do.
That's if the um. Elected board. If they go on appointed board, there's not.
That's, yeah, that was my.
Yeah, we can kind of go appointed first and see where.
Language and we put it and we may get appointed.
Well, I mean, I guess so. For us, this is the next step is for you guys to look at it and go through council and figure out what is allowed and not allowed, right?
Right, well.
I think it's fair to say an appointed board, if that's what works out, I mean.
So an appointed board.
Still a board that is going to have the ability to. We're not asking to be appointed.
No, I I get that.
So if we went appointed, then we 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 could take, take a draft of uh of this. Do we have it in Word? We can change it to being appointed. We can send it to town council. I mean, and it will come back on the warrant for the October meeting. And the selectmen vote on whether they're going to put it through or not.
Yeah. And then like, and I, the way I would see that work out in practical terms is that, you know, like if. This was the case right now, then you would be on that board as well, right? Like, I think you'd want to put a selectman on that board.
What do you, how many members you have now? Are you a full, full? I know you guys have to get a. The town clerk, someone from your members as far as.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Getting appointed and everything else. So with make that a priority, step one, right? Uh, step two, yeah, how many people do you have currently?
Again, this is separate, like, we're we're not.
How many people do you have at this point as far as members? Do you need X amount?
Yeah, we have six.
Six, so having a seventh person would make sense because you want to keep it odd, right? Odd number.
And that would allow open space to be an open space as opposed to open space in everything, right? Like.
All right. Well, we have spent forty minutes on that. I think we got to move on. We have a packed agenda. So I appreciate the presentation. I think we have actionable steps. So thank you very much.
I just want to make a correction for the minute. It's nine member board currently.
Oh, it is nine. There's six.
You have two vacancies on that board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Slavon Zager, Gen I two. We have a presentation information from Town Clerk regarding September third. Twenty twenty-four primary and upcoming elections. Cheryl, please.
Evening. Thank you so much. Uh, for the viewers at home, my name is Cheryl Estrella. I'm the Free Town Town Clerk. I want to first start off by thanking the board for allowing me this time. Um, more of a public service announcement for our residents and our voters here in town. Um, to bring some clarity to the election, specifically the primary that's going to be taking place on September third. I've been before this board quite a few times regarding the changes with the Votes Act, so I just want to again clarify that for the townspeople. So the next slide, um, twenty twenty-four state primary important dates and deadlines. We are starting um in-person early voting this Saturday, August twenty-fourth, which also happens to be. The last day for folks who are not registered in Freetown as voters to register to vote. So the Board of Registrar's office located within the Town Clerk's office will be open this Saturday from nine AM to five PM. Um, and they can also register to vote online at votinma.com. Again, that's for new folks who haven't registered to vote in Freetown and those folks who want to change their party. The party decision deadline will be this Saturday. So again, first day of early voting begins this Saturday, August twenty-fourth, and then continues all of next week through Friday, August thirtieth. In-person early voting happens here at the Freetown Police Station, um, Saturday from eight to two. Sunday is not going to be available. And then it follows the regular town hall business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight to four, and Fridays from eight to twelve. Um, Monday, August twenty-sixth, um, which is the first Monday during uh in-person early voting. There is a five PM deadline. So that deadline is for folks to request their vote by mail-in ballot. Via the postcards that they were mailed by the Secretary of State's office or via paper application from the town clerk. So no one can receive a vote by mail ballot without first applying for that vote by mail ballot. Um, I just wanted to point out that those postcards that everyone received came from the Secretary of State's office, from uh. Secretary Galvin's office, not from the town clerk's office or the elections office. And folks who have not or decided not to participate in vote by mail. They will continue to receive a postcard for each and every election. If they ignore it or don't choose to have it. That was written into the Votes Act of twenty twenty-two. So again, folks who. Um, choose not to opt in to vote by mail for this primary, come September twenty-first on our round. They will be receiving an additional postcard for the November election. So we get nice little love letters back in the office, letting us know their opinions on on vote by mail. Um, but just please know if you have an issue with those postcards, we unfortunately, we can be a sounding board for you, but we unfortunately can't stop it. So. Um, the next slide of deadlines. Friday, August thirtieth, even though the in-person early voting that's taking place here at the police station. Ends at twelve PM noon. Absentee voting would still continue at the town hall until five PM. It's a five PM deadline that Friday before the election. So absentee voting, it's written into the um constitution, absentee voting is for just cause only. So there are three specific causes that will make you applicable to receive an absentee ballot or mark an absentee ballot. An application is still necessary. Those are filled out at my office, but you would have to be away from the town on primary or election day. So whether you're working or you're on vacation or taking a trip, you're not available, not in town. Uh, that would be a cause. If you have a religious, a religious belief preventing you. From going to the polls on that day, or if you have a disability that's preventing you from going to the polls. Um, and then that's the Friday before Labor Day. And then uh. The Tuesday following the Monday holiday is primary day. So the polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. All precincts vote at the Freetown Elementary School. And we ask that you use the Memorial Drive entrance, which is across the street from the baseball park. Um, school is not in session that day, so that's a plus. So we won't have added congestion there. Um, and then also. For those folks who did apply for a vote by mail ballot and received a vote by mail ballot, they have up until eight PM. To return that ballot, that vote by mail ballot. The one stipulation is it cannot be returned to the polls. So if you've got a ballot, you want to return it, it's not eight o'clock yet on primary or election day, you have to bring that specifically to the office of the town clerk. Or drop it in the white mailbox, the drop box located out front of town hall. That box does get checked periodically through the day. And on election day, it's every hour on the hour and at eight PM, that box is sealed. And a note is placed there so that folks know that they've missed the deadline there. Okay? Um, moving on, uh, we have some helpful tidbits for voters. So I'd have done a couple of Facebook posts just to try to bring clarity as to. Um, who can vote in a primary? Any registered voter can vote in a primary. The only difference is you must take the ballot that is associated with the party that you are registered in. Now, we have um several different um parties. We have the Democrat, Libertarian and Republican. Parties. Those are the three uh major parties here in Massachusetts, each with their own ballot. Now, we have two sets of ballots due to the different representative districts. So precinct one has a Democrat, Libertarian and Republican ballot. Um, because they're the sixth Bristol district. And then precincts two and three share the same representative. Uh, in the eighth Bristol district, they'll have their three ballots, Democratic, Libertarian and Republican. Um, unenrolled voters. There seems to be a lot of confusion with unenrolled. I unfortunately um don't care for that word. I like to explain it and say. It's not that you're unenrolled because that makes it seem like you're not enrolled as a voter. It's more meant to be undeclared. So it's also known as the old independent um party. So at. When you're an unenrolled voter and you're choosing to vote, whether it be in-person early voting, vote by mail, or at the polls, you have your choice of party ballot. Um, back in the day, it used to impact you when you chose your ballot. It would change you and mark you in that specific party. It no longer does that, hasn't done that for quite some time. But we have some voters who still believe. That it makes them, if they vote in a primary and they choose a ballot, that they're going to be locked into that party. It doesn't. So you're not declared. It doesn't impact your voter enrollment status. You stay as un- unenrolled or the old independent or undeclared. When we're at the polls, um. Per the Mass General law, voters have to announce the party ballot that they want, Democrat, Libertarian or Republican. Now, um, the ballot color headers, the tops of the ballots, you would normally think. That red would be associated with Republican and blue with Democrat. That's what um they're typically associated with in the media. However, that's not the case. So the pinkish header or the reddish header, that is the Democratic ballot. The blue one is the Republican and purple will be for Libertarian. It's also in state law so that observers can hear which parties and party ballots are being chosen. Um, and then if folks are not sure who's on the ballot, which ballot they'd like. Sample ballots are on the website. My webpage is all updated. It's got all the information, a plethora of information. It's all on the one page and you just click on the links. At the bottom of the page to inform yourself a little bit better. Um, for quite some time now, since fall of twenty twenty-one. We use the electronic check-in via the poll pads. We still have a ba- a paper backup in case anything happens. Um, but just to put everyone's mind at ease, that is not connected to the internet at all. We get that question a lot. That is only uh Bluetooth connectivity. So that when you get checked in, your slip or your label prints out. And that is our paper check-in. So but that is um not connected to the internet at all. Um, they also have the option to scan the license. Massachusetts is a non-ID state, which means we cannot ask you for your ID. But certainly you can present your ID and it just makes it for a quicker look up at the polls. So you'll see that the lines of of voters have diminished. Um, A, due to the different ways that you can vote, but also those electronic um check-ins. It makes the process go by within seven seconds. From start to finish. Um, or they can still state the name and the address. Either way, whether you present a license or you state your name and address. Um, and then which party ballot you want, the elec- the election worker will have to repeat it back to you. That's in the Mass General laws. Um, and then just some websites here for folks who want to get some more information. Um, if they want to find out which precinct they're in, there. We've got maps and signage and we have greeters. Um, but if you're not sure. Uh, what precinct you're in, this is a couple of things of know before you go. You can check your precinct um at that website, Freetownma.gov slash voting precincts. You can check your voter status or party affiliation at votinma.com. Um, sometimes folks are not sure if they've registered in Freetown. They're still, they're in between or just moved from maybe another community within Massachusetts. It's always good to check there. Again, we have the deadline of um. August twenty-fourth to get yourself registered here in Freetown. Refer to the sample ballots there. And again, polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. All three precincts, precincts one, two and three, vote at Freetown Elementary School. And again, to use the uh Memorial Drive entrance. I do have some stats for you if you're interested. Um, I can tell you currently, we have seven thousand two hundred and four voters. Out of those voters, uh, one thousand two hundred and seventy-two have requested mail-in ballots. So that's about seventeen percent of the total voters have requested mail-in ballots. Of that twelve seventy-two. Five hundred and eighteen have already been returned and processed. So um you'll see the Secretary of State actually do a lot of infomercials where Track My Ballot. Where has your town clerk or your elections commission received your ballot? That all comes through our office. So that gets updated. Where we've been in election mode, will continue to be election mode up through seven days after the election. Um, so that's that. And then. Uh, already for the state election come November, we've already exceeded that application amount. We're already over thirteen hundred. So one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine as of this afternoon. So.
That's more than I expected.
Yeah, so people, I think it's just going to take a matter of time for people um to get acclimated with it. Um, but it's nice to give options. But again, the traditional vote on election day is still available to everyone and. I mean, we encourage you just to folks to just come on down and exercise your right to vote.
Great job. And I don't know how you keep track of all those dates.
My head goes spinning. I may look at you funny and have to process it in my brain to give you the correct answer, but yes.
So my one question for you, because you already answered one, thank you, is um, you you said you get a lot of hate mail back. With the postcards?
Yes.
How do people unenroll from that?
So unfortunately, there is no way to unenroll or opt out, you would say, of getting those vote by mail postcards. So with the Votes Act, that was written into law. Um, they have, the Secretary of State's office has to send it to every single uh registered voter within the Commonwealth in all three hundred and fifty-one communities. Um, if people want to affect change and not have those, I would say contact your state legislators. But as of this time, there's no way to opt out. So um folks, again, who maybe discarded or were not interested for the September or. Even through January earlier this year, you'll, and you ignored it or you threw it out or just didn't answer, you will get another one for the November. They want to give everyone. Um, opportunity to apply if that is their wish.
Fair enough.
No, Cheryl, uh, November's a long time away, right? First one coming up is September. I know.
I was doing the annual stuff today.
But the residents listening to this here today and and at home, days, days from now. If we're to tell them anything, it's one thing, right? Like, you're going to continue getting these postcards from the state until either you ignore them. Until election day, right? Or until you respond back to them, right? Right, the affirmative, correct. And to make a clear distinction is, these are just registration for voting, not ballots, right? So I've been getting a lot of concerns, like I keep getting ballots in the mail. There's no ballots in the mail. This is just to register yourself to become a legal. Registered voter. And for whatever party you choose to be.
Um, so the vote by mail applications or postcards that everyone has been receiving, so that is the application. In order for a ballot to be mailed out the door. It needs to have a paper application. So and those paper applications come in via um online portal, comes via um. Federal postcards, which are for the YOCA voters, citizens in uh uh uniformed um. federal postcards, which are for the YOCAV voters, citizens in uh, uh, uniformed services that come overseas, are stationed overseas, and also um, the actual postcards that people receive. So those are the applications.
Well, thank you very much, Cheryl, that's very informative, I appreciate it. So uh, moving on, agenda item. Agenda item three. This is just open session minutes from eight-eight twenty twenty-four. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes, meeting minutes from eight-eight twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor? Agenda item four, discussion of vote whether to approve the policy for purchase orders. Look through that policy, everyone have a chance to check that out. It's uh, five thousand dollars. Seemed like a pretty straightforward policy to me.
And that's the change, it's three thousand currently.
It's going to five thousand, sorry, yeah.
Five thousand, because now things are so expensive that they hit the three thousand pretty quickly. So what it means is when it hits five thousand, it has to come on a purchase order and I have to sign it. Under that, the department has just processed the paperwork with their, you know, through their own budget.
That makes sense.
Yeah, the only thing I didn't see on this, maybe I didn't read it, is is that for materials and labor or just materials? Was that total?
It would be for like a total bill. It wouldn't be, it'd be whatever they're doing. If they're hiring a carpenter to do something and the bill's greater than five thousand dollars, that they have to create a purchase order, which I have to sign. And Matt has to sign it, saying that they have the funds to pay the bill.
Yeah, and that's how it gets in the accounting system or anything else. Makes sense. We good on this?
Yeah.
So without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy for purchase orders.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Agenda item five, discussion of vote whether to have Narcan kits in the town hall.
I have, I have talked to um, Board of Health about this as well, and so they're on board with this too, so. But we're the selectmen really, are the keepers of the town buildings. I figured I'd bring it before, before this board, but um, ultimately, the Board of Health will really decide the details of how this, how this occurs.
Decide where it's going to go.
There's training that's going to have to be done. And I've already talked to uh, Kevin Dismaris, the health agent about it, so he, he, once you vote, if you vote in the affirmative, they'll take over and and make it happen.
Yep, and I do think, I mean, unfortunately, this is something we probably do need, which is I think we've all seen the impact. So, alright, any other questions or concerns?
I'm assuming it's going to be the same kit sitting outside our fire station right there?
Same kit, and I, and they already have them, and like I said, I think they have funding through the Coalition to get training. I know that Kevin is working on this, like I said, sort of a Board of Health, um, really taking the lead on this. But just bringing it to the Board of Selectmen just to get the approval to put it in the, the town hall. You know, you never know, there's always the threat of the fentanyl's being in the mail or being somewhere. And this way, if anything should happen, we ha- we have access to the Narcan kit.
I couldn't agree more.
Yep, okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to um, approve having Narcan kit in the town hall.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item six, discussion of vote whether to approve the tuition reimbursement request from the former plan, uh, planning land use admin. So, the total tuition here is three thousand dollars and change, right? Yeah, and so the actual tuition, like the course that was taken is definitely uh, you know, job-related, there's no question there. It's for Tuition for Disaster Emergency Management Course. Uh, I think the only kind of thing, question is that per the CBA, approval needs to be given prior, you know, before the course is taken. Looks like approval was, in this case, was given retrospect. I think the plan, and unfortunately she's not with us anymore, but she did a great job for this town. Personally, I have no issue approving this, so it's around fifteen hundred dollars. But I think we have to be clear going forward and make sure we communicate to, to everyone else that we need to have prior approval uh, before, you know, like, this one, we would obviously approve this, it makes a lot of sense, but just to keep ourselves out of any sticky situations down, down the road.
That's the issue I have with it, right? I agree with you. She's done a great job for the town, but the CBA language is there. It's, it says you shall do this before you get that. It's like someone taking leave and not telling us about it after they come back.
Yep.
Right, it's, it's, what I don't want is, we have five unions in town. Now, we have, we just permit in a sense, five unions to say, hey, I can, not, not say they're going to do this, but essentially say, hey, I didn't, I didn't know this part, but here's my, here's my tuition payment for basket weave and whatever it is. There's a, there's a reason why it's written in CBA language, has to cover the town, right? So, I know it's only fifty percent of the, of the reimbursement benefit, but town council's kind of sticky with it as well, as far as what's the right thing to do. And I don't want to get us into a situation that this, this is a norm, because it's not.
I hear you.
It's tough.
I think one of the issues with preapproval is funding source, right?
Yeah.
Because.
I'm sure the money's there.
I, I, I agree that she took the course, it was an approved course, it's just that now I, I have to find the funding for this that I don't have, that's not in the budget. So it may be that I have to go to town meeting and ask for this additional funding. But that being said, I, I don't, um, I don't, I don't think you should not give it to her. I'm just saying, like, that's the reason for the preapproval, is so that we can make sure we can fund it accordingly.
One of my other things too is, is I hundred percent agree with both sides of this, is she's no longer here. So I think, I don't know how the CBA is written, I apologize for not knowing this off the top of my head, but part of it is employment at the time of reimbursement, right? So I don't go and apply for something and then leave, and I, this isn't, you know, a direct thing at her or attack at her, but I think if, you know, the town is having to, to spend money on people's education, it's tough that we're going to spend it, and then they're walking out the door reaping the benefits of it. And it sounds awful to say it that way, but there's truth to it in the fact that we're paying for education for someone, and now they're using it to their betterment somewhere else. So that's, that's the part, I think that bothers me with it. But I also think that it's tough to, you know, if she did it with the right intention, when she started taking the course and there was a simple mistake made, then.
Or like, there could have been verbal kind of approval and.
Was there any conversation in the office that this was going to transpire, as far as?
She didn't talk to me about tuition reimbursement. She did tell me she was going for her master's degree. I was aware of that.
You'd think it would be kind of easy, but it's kind of tough on me because it weighs on both.
Excuse me, someone's cell phone's going off.
And I do believe she submitted the paperwork for this reimbursement while she was still employed, right? Yeah, she was still employed.
It's, it's tough, because per the CBA language is, if you don't submit a prior approval, you're not entitled to this, to this reimbursement.
Yeah.
And that's where the, where the, we, we speak on behalf of the town, and per the town agreements, this isn't permissible. And then if we do open this up to one person, now we're opening up to everybody else. And as cruel as that sounds, and I'm not, and I, again, I, I, this is a valued employee. It's just, you, you're going to create that situ- that situation you just spoke of, potentially this coming back in front of us on another issue, whether leave or policy or something else that's in the CBA. Sorry, CBA.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, I'll put up her vote, you know, I think that guys are doing. So I'm going to entertain a motion that we approve the tuition reimbursement request uh, for former planning land use admin.
I just can't do it. Kills me, but I can't do it. Because I just, I'm too scared of what can come. And I feel for her.
Similar reasons, I'm, I'm a no on this as well. Um, because it's, we open it up, we open it up for everything, and we, we have those CBA agreements that we all just agreed to this, this past year, all of us were sitting on agreements for a reason, and as a, I know it's little money, but it still has to do it the right way.
It's a little money to the town, it's a lot to the individual, so that's what's killing me with this.
Likewise.
Okay, so I couldn't get the motion made, so pass on it?
It was turned, it was denied, so it was a no. Two no's and a yes, right?
Alright, moving on. So actually, well, I'm, I'm going to, we're actually a little over time. So the public hearing that's was going to take place tonight, it's been rescheduled and pushed down to nine, uh, it's September ninth. I had, I do have to open the public hearing, and then I have to uh, continue it, so I'm going to do that right now. So the Town of Freetown Public Notice, uh, nine-eight twenty twenty-four, notice is hereby given that a hearing will be held in August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Police Station Community Room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Massachusetts, at seven PM to review the Class Two Motor License held by Copperhead Industries, Inc., DBA, uh, Chop Head Custom Cycles, um, Thirteen County Road, East Freetown, Massachusetts, oh-two-seven-one-seven. So in, so the hearing is now open. The reason why the, they requested that we extend this, because they have an attorney, that they want to be present. The attorney couldn't be here today. So um, we've granted them the ability to push this, so that they can have their attorney present during the next hearing. So yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that we um, continue this hearing until nine-nine twenty twenty-four, seven PM.
Motion made.
Um, just a quick question, when did the motion, the, was it within forty-eight hours of, of posting this meeting? So that thing's in the clear, everything else?
Yeah, and it's, and, and the abutters have been.
Alright, uh, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I think, were you here for that hearing?
Is anyone here for that hearing?
Did you understand what just happened?
How come I didn't get a notice that it changed? I'm right next door, I'm right next door.
I'm, I'm not sure.
There were like thirty notices that went out.
There was, I mean, if the abutters were notified, I'm not sure.
Twice, because once a, a letter went out.
I got two letters stating that it was today, two of them.
The second letter said on it that it was continued. I have a copy of it at the top of it.
No, I got no continuance. Today was supposed to be the day. That's kind of lousy. Something's wrong. Anyhow, thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me, is it for August twenty-ninth?
No, so, sorry, for, for uh, September ninth, September ninth.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Agenda item seven. This is uh, discussion of vote whether to approve Saint Vincent's Services Motorcycle Run utilizing town roads on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So it looks like this starts, you know, it just goes through Freetown. I don't think it starts in Freetown.
Yeah.
I don't think it ends in Freetown.
Begins and ends in Fall River.
Yeah. So they're just driving through town, but uh, is there any roads that need to be shut down or anything of that nature? Okay, so do, like, Chief Police okay with this? I mean, I'm, I don't really know what, what we could say about it anyways.
Board of Health agent, they all signed off.
Okay, great. So what, any, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Saint Vincent Service, uh, Saint Vincent Services Motorcycle Run utilizing town roads at nine fifteen twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Agenda item eight, this is discussion of vote whether to approve the spending plan for the, uh, from the Council on Aging Director for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three Formula Grant in the sum of nine thousand fifty dollars. Yep, so and the money will be allocated towards um, Chair Yoga and Matt Yoga, two times per mon- uh, sorry, Chair Yoga's two times per week, Matt Yoga's two times per month, and then Drums Alive. That sounds cool. Four times per a month. Um, any questions or concerns?
I don't know, those drum, drum stuff, that's, that's a lot of work.
So is Matt Yoga.
Oh, I can imagine.
Yeah, I need to do some yoga.
I think we all do.
Yeah.
Postponed last week though?
And this is the twenty-three grant, so this is just carryover money, so.
Yeah, this is more money from the Formula Grant. It's already money that we have. Um, it's the, the prior year, we haven't even gone into this previous year.
That's good.
Awesome. Have you looked into goat yoga? That's a real thing. It's bizarre, but that's a real thing.
I did see the sign down next to Profile Rock that someone had goat yoga, that people over there, they had it.
See, it's a thing.
So that's where I thought maybe that's where it was sparking from for you.
Maybe subconsciously, subconsciously I haven't seen that sign, I don't know.
I was non-permitted.
I didn't say that. But no, I, I mean, I know you, you had spoke a lot about different uh, activities and how well they're being taken on by the citizens, um, the seniors rather, and so, uh, I love this. I love seeing more and more and spending money where we should, and, and it's quote-unquote free.
It is, yeah, it's, especially the yoga programs, they're very utilized. Chair Yoga is about seventeen to twenty every Tuesday and Thursday. At Matt Yoga, we can only fit up to seventeen, and we, we do sometimes, we can only fit that many mats in the, in the buildings.
Wow, that's great.
Yes.
Yeah, yoga's not cheap if you have to go.
No, so it's free right now, we'll see.
More programs for, for our senior population, the better, so if we need goats, we'll find the goats. And it cuts the grass at the same time, solves two birds, one stone. Sorry, too soon.
Alright, so we good there?
Yeah.
Alright, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the spending plan for the Council on Aging Director, sorry, from the Council on Aging Director for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three Formula Grant in the sum of nine thousand fifty dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda item nine, discussion of vote whether to establish a donation account uh, to receive revenue from the community programs. So pretty much here, the revolving fund can't receive donations.
That's correct.
If I'm understanding this correctly, therefore, we need to create a donation fund to receive donations.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, yeah, I, I think, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we're not charging for events, so people are donating money.
We need to do something with that money.
Yeah, and there's no way for us to get that money into anything. So donation account will be, uh, they are set up for the community program director to use.
At her discretion, right? So, so, because that's, I mean, I don't want, I think it's kind of ridiculous for, you know, if you have four hundred dollars in donations sitting there, if I have to come from the board, wait two weeks to get it, you know? So I think they just.
Yeah, and I think she, she works hand in hand with Debbie already, so it's not, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a good point, you don't want them waiting either, so.
Yeah, I mean, as long, it'll have to be accounted for, obviously, right? Like donations, I'm sure there's receipts of donations, and then there's, you know, so.
Similar to the fireworks and parade, fireworks and parade have a comic, yeah, they receive donations, so. But, but as I started reading this, I, I started thinking, I've always, I've always been asked about different ways to donate to the town, right? There's different mechanisms. So if we do set up a donation account, do we set one up that has multiple categories? Instead of just community programs, do we do one for, hey, I want to donate towards the school for a new playground type of thing? Is there different categories we can add to the donation account, or do we create our own donation account?
Well, each donation account has to have a sort of its own, right? Because.
Intended use, right?
Yeah, intended use, right? If they're donating for fireworks, they don't want that going to the community program director. They want that to be used for the fireworks and for that whole um, Fourth of July stuff, so.
So this would be strictly for donations, not for if we're selling merchandise or anything like that?
We're charging, that's the revolving fund.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, just a silly question, but say, at yoga, someone, you know, everyone gives ten dollars into the, we don't have to accept that donation though, right?
Not if it's ten dollars, no.
Okay, is there like, there's a reasonableness, like?
Is it fifty dollars?
Okay.
Anything over fifty dollars.
There's a training in there. Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. I really do. That way, these programs continue to grow, right? And we get more of them and more of them. Um, I'm looking forward to movie night coming up, right? So to see what the, the volume is for that location and everything else. That's going to be a great day, September sixth, and, and more of those, right? So, yeah, you guys are speaking to my heart, so let's do it.
Alright, great. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to establish a donation account to receive revenue um, from community programs.
I'm motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, agenda item ten, uh, discussion of vote whether to host a blood drive in partnership with Red Cross on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, two-thirty. Two thirty to seven thirty P M. at the Council on Aging.
I'm gonna let Kylie speak because she's set this up.
Yeah.
And, and since Rebecca is here as well, just, I know you're working with the Board of Health on this, so.
Um, I already got Kevin's approval of the location, and I've been working with the American Red Cross. Um, they're totally fine with that location as well, and they kind of handle everything. Um, they even have their own volunteers, they set and break, um, everything up and down. Um, they've been pretty wonderful so far, so I was hoping to be able to use, uh, the C O A for something like this.
That makes sense, and then, yeah, we just have to make sure we communicate that out, you know, we could use our different avenues, Facebook and everything else, right, to try to get some.
What day of the week is it on? I just worried about the Tuesday, traffic jam, so.
For the, um,
The, is it, uh, in its own truck, or is it gonna be done inside the building?
Inside the building.
Okay, good, yeah, no, I think that's good, just obviously for accessibility for people, so.
I'm just gonna run this through my board to next week, we don't meet until next week, so it's gonna be on my agenda as well for the C O A board.
Awesome, yeah, just, everyone's on the same page, perfect, smart.
Just so that they're aware of that.
Yep.
And a little positive thing.
Yeah, awesome, so with that, I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve the hosting a blood drive in partnership with the Red Cross on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Two thirty, seven thirty P M. at the Council on Aging.
I'm motion made.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that open for town employees, too?
Everybody, right?
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I,
Yeah.
It's at the Council on Aging, but anybody,
Anyone can go, right, yeah, so, okay, perfect, so.
Okay, agenda item eleven, discussion of vote whether to accept a donation in kind from Robert Dean to be used for consultants and or engineers to design and permit refurbishing, uh, Porter pasture to its prior condition under the control of the Conservation Commission. And I think, so on the agenda here, just to be clear, it says, uh, donation in kind, but it could potentially be legal tender to, like, cash, right? So, just wanna make sure, yeah, our check, so we're gonna, I'm gonna make that a little more broad, uh, when we go on a vote on this. So, um, anything else to add to that?
No, I know Mr. Sullivan, Chair of the,
Give me the skinny.
Yeah.
Robert Dean, well, actually, his name is D E A N E.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was, uh, born and raised in Freetown, um, he went to California, the San Diego, uh, area of California. And he made out well in life. He's ninety-six years old. He wishes to donate, uh, a sum of money to the town of Freetown to maintain and develop and redevelop, uh, Porter pasture, which his family donated, uh, well, provided the town back in nineteen seventy. Susan Sargent here from North Main Street is,
Spelled the same way?
From North Main Street will fill in anything that I might miss, uh, but Mr. Dean got, uh, touch with us in June. We met with him, uh, Victoria and I met with him and his family. Uh, he wishes to, uh, start the fund with seed money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which, uh, would be pay, to pay for a, uh, plan, an engineering plan on redoing the beach area, and also, he spoke of a forestry plan. But since that time, when we met him, we realized that we have a forestry plan that's about four years old, uh, that would work, uh, there. So, it would be, uh, a sum of money to start with, it may, uh, turn into a trust fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, you have anything else, Susan, or the right one?
So, Charlie, is the amount a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, well, that's what he spoke.
This piece is what,
That's what he spoke.
Just so they can add it into the thing that they're gonna be approving, the, uh, donation of, whether it be in kind or in, in ca- you know, cash of a hundred thousand dollars to effectuate the, um, consultants and engineers to design and permit the refurbishing of Porter pasture to its prior condition of when he grew up to the best that we can permit it, under the control of the Conservation Commission, and they put that in there because they, they do have control of that land. It's not something that we have control of.
That's amazing.
Now, after doing this work, right, the long-term girl, I, I'm often there with, with the family and children and everything else, it's a beautiful location. Uh, what's the, will it have a, will it be easy, more accessible, after it's all designed, redone, or what's the ultimate goal for it, I guess?
Well, I, 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 I think the ultimate goal on, on the part of the commission is to develop the property to be more, uh, user, uh, friendly, uh, for, um, passive recreation.
Yeah.
Uh, like we said, would be to redo, uh, replace the beach. Um, I have a photograph, the town, uh, had aerial, um, or photos from the nineteen fifties. Uh, I have a copy of that, you can kind of see where the beach was, you can see now in Google Earth. Uh, there's a couple of pictures from the historical society that, uh, relates back to it. Uh, Susan also has a couple of other pictures, uh, we'll work on that, and that would be, so the first step would be to have a feasibility study.
Mm-hmm.
If it's feasible, and we, then we'll go on with, uh, a plan to develop and permit, uh, the beach area first. That would be, you know, let's stop back from the water and work a, a way out. Um, also, in, in the forestry plan, there's a lot of, I, there's a lot of, uh, pine that really could be harvested, not that, um, out to make money out of it, but the fact that they, the pine trees have reached, uh, close to their maturity.
Mm-hmm.
And they end up becoming more likely a hazard.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so it might be better to thin out, it, it's very thick in there.
Yeah.
It reminds me of a hobbit forest, if you ask me, a lot of it is, uh, if you know, if you could go back there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ferns and so forth, uh, on the, uh, floor, and, you know, we could develop that, develop some walking paths and so forth.
You know, what, so I grew up on Jeffrey Lane, so my backyard was the Porter pasture, so, what about, there's, uh, that graveyard back there.
Uh, yes, the, uh, Cemetery Committee, um, Commission, uh, re, they redid the laneway and so forth. They, they cleared it out, I think, two years ago now, if I, um, one of the things that I see there is, as we let access or, is we wanna kind of make a barrier, there, there's a laneway, but the laneway actually goes right up to the cemetery. And you could actually, if you went up in the night and you didn't know what you were doing, you could actually drive into the cemetery. So, we wanna do something there that,
Yeah, yeah.
Other than that, it's, uh, basically open forest.
Yeah, and I was, I mean, I was so happy to grow up on that, it was an awesome place to grow up, having like untouched woods, like, you know, but I, I think it's a great initiative, and I'm totally support this.
Yeah, no, I agree with you on the forest, it, as you, as you go drive through that narrow road, it's, uh, the light disappears. And it pops back up at the beach area, so, and I think that creates also an additional area of people to go at night when it's closed to, you know, have their own fun, but then not clean up. So, that'll help out in the long term.
I, I looked, uh, two weeks ago, I, I spoke to the police department. They ran a, um, li- uh, basically a, uh, search of the logs, uh, for the last five and a half years. And there's maybe, uh, well, there's many, many entries for people, for the police checking the property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but as to having problems there, there's not much activity there at all. Uh, there was a little, it, it's, it's a very popular place for crabbing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did go down, um, last Monday, uh, to, in the middle of the day, I ran into the environmental police officer whose area this, uh, town is, and she says she doesn't have, that, that, that there's no illegal crabbing, um, to, to speak of, you know, some people get short crabs or something like that. But that there's no license needed, and there's no, uh, oh, uh, difference between a female crab and a male crab being harvested.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's it. One of the things I think, uh, might be good is to try to encourage, there's a parking lot there that nobody ever uses.
Right.
On the laneway, they always go down, and it might be better to, uh, kind of restrict it, especially if we, in, uh, we renew the beach. Uh, so that people don't drive on the beach.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's the be, that's all in theory.
Yeah.
Right, no, it's a great idea.
But the, the good news is that we will have the means at which to complete these things, right? So, it's positive, so, ninety-six years old, God bless them, right, yeah, I mean, that's amazing, I, I, that, that stuff makes your heart happy. I like doing stuff like this.
I think, one of the gravestones there ended up in, like, California.
And he sent it back.
Did he? Yeah, I remember that. I did a, I did a school report on that.
That's small town stuff.
That's great.
Not that long ago.
Yeah.
End of yesterday.
Alright, so, thank you very much, I appreciate the background there, any other questions?
No, this is great information, great, thank you so much for the family and Mr. Dean and everything else.
Okay, I'm now working me while I do this motion here. So, I'll entertain a motion to vote, uh, to accept a donation in kind or in legal tender from Robert Dean, with an A, to be used for consultants and or engineers to design, uh, and permit refurbishing Porter pastures to its prior condition under the control of the Conservation Commission.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a side note, I, I spoke, when I spoke to him last, uh, week, he was going to get a legal document setting down parameters.
Perfect.
For, for his, the spending of his money, and I said, we'd be more than happy to sign it. Whatever it is, we'll be good with.
Yep.
And I, I will probably on the next agenda set up the actual fund, vote to have the fund set up.
It's funny, like, Graham Dean, like, obviously, that's a road, right, and I never thought about where that name came from, and now I know.
Oh, man, that's funny, I didn't, I didn't even connect it till you just said it.
Dean family were the people who built Bean, John D, was he?
John M.
John M.
John M, okay, oh, interesting.
Medal of Honor winner in the Civil War.
Wow, that's really interesting.
Wow.
Want something every day, alright, thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, now, agenda item twelve, discussion of vote whether to approve ambulance abatements and write-offs for July twenty twenty four in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred twenty-nine, twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. So, it looks like the, and I, I don't have in front of me, it's like, the actual write-offs were nineteen thousand? The total amount of revenue collected, I think, was eighty, where are you, what page are you on? Yeah, here it is. So, it's thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety was the write-offs, and then other mandatory adjustments relative to insurance for the month of July twenty twenty four is a hundred and fifty thousand, that's the abatements, right?
Yeah, that, the, those two numbers make it up, but the hundred and fifty is sort of mandatory, right, because the insurance, they're only gonna pay what they're gonna pay.
Yeah, it always breaks my brain. We do it every month, I've done it like a hundred times, but still. But anyway, so the total amount, revenue collected was eighty-eight thousand. Yeah, here it is. Any questions or concerns on that?
No, it is what it is.
It's crazy to me.
Yeah, it is, it is crazy when you look at the numbers and you see the numbers, it's surreal, the size of the numbers, but, you know, they, we, we talked about this recently, right, where we changed how they go back and try and collect money. But the, the old analogy, you can't get blood from a stone, so if there's people who, you know, they go after, try and get the money.
Well, it's the insurance companies of the stone.
Well, yeah, absolutely, but then they go to, and that's true, but I'm saying, like, the individuals, they go to the individuals and try and collect money, but,
Broken system.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay, but nothing we can do about it today, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the ambulance abatements and write-offs for July twenty twenty four in the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so with that, I will kick it over to Personnel.
Selective matters, why don't you take fifteen, because I'm on the agenda, that way you can just knock that out of the way.
Alright, I'll do that, want me to do it right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, agenda nineteen fifteen, discussion of vote whether to approve the appointments of the following individuals uh, to the Bylaw Review Committee effective eight twenty, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty six.
Twenty-five.
It'll be twenty-five.
Twenty-five, you're right. Uh, so it's Emily A. Doors, Cheryl C. Estrella, Carlos A. Lopes, Deborah Petty, Paul Sadik, Stephen Tripp, and, uh, is it Jose?
Yes.
Uh, Ventura, Ventura? Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the appointments for the individuals just listed to the Bylaw Review Committee effective six twenty, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
Motion made.
Eight twenty twenty-four.
What did I say?
Six twenty.
Eight, I got so, so eight twenty, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda nineteen fifteen is done.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Alright, Edward, agenda thirteen, acknowledge the resignation of Mark Joe's as Hubber Master effective eight fourteen, twenty twenty four. Um, thank you, Mark, for forty-four years of giving to this town, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors, so.
Yeah, alright, good call, cause I was actually, I actually recently asked how long that was, cause I knew it was forever, forty-four years, that's,
I think it was thirty-five, yeah, thirty-five in this position, and then other positions throughout the years as well, so forty-four years of giving back to town, Freetown, so.
And his family.
And his family, correct, correct. So, so thank you for that, and we wish you the best. Alright, so fourteen, item agenda fourteen, the Personnel Agenda is discussion of vote whether to increase the amount of vacation time in the Personnel Bylaw. So, right now, we're capped at what, two weeks, at five, at, at, two years, uh, five years, I should say?
I think it's one week for first year, second year, it's two, it's ten days. On five years, it's fifteen days. Ten years, it's twenty days, and then, um, fifteen years, it's one day, one day for each additional year. So, it's like sixteen year, you know, it goes up by one day until you hit twenty-five days. The issue is, mm, a lot of towns now, when they hire the professional, the department heads under the bylaw, they, they give them three weeks right out of the gate. Um, we have just a week and then two weeks. Um, I thought maybe on the third year, we could go to the three weeks as opposed to the five year. Um, you know, the trend is more vacation time, everybody wants more vacation time. So, um, I've brought this before the board in the past, uh, because it would require a change in the bylaw, or we, we go to, uh, town meeting. Um, so here we are at town meeting, so I thought I would, um, bring it again, just because, uh, you know, it, eventually, we might not get personnel if, if they're comparing apples to apples in other towns. Um, but, you know, we do have that piece that it can, you know, it's, this is what the union gets, pretty much, so.
Right, right. You, you're right on that, it's, hiring has been interesting, if not tough at times, right, for different positions around town. But one of the things we can continue to do is we always do apples-to-apples comparisons with other towns, similar in size, right? And one of the things that we lack on, or, or less thereof, is vacation time, we, we haven't really kept up with what other towns are doing. And even our own CBA's, as Deb just mentioned, so this brings neck to neck, so everyone's equal, whether you're covered by a union or not, so that's fair.
Right, yeah.
That's the simplest way to put it.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward, and I think that, you know, it's, it's not a big change dollar-wise to the town, but it's a big change to the individual who's coming to try and work for us and look at their time, right, cause, especially, we all want time with our families and stuff, so I'm, I'm all for it, I know.
Yeah, especially as like you transition from like a part-time job to a full-time job, and then, yeah, you get the home discount for having local residents working in town, right? But then you're like, oh, I'm missing this piece or that piece, so that may be hesitant for them to, you know, vacation times that are preset with kids and everything else. This really does open us up to a more broad community and, and allow more people to come in and stay here and wanna continue working here because now they're competitive with other towns, right? If I had a choice between Freetown and Lakeville, Lake, Lakeville gave me the same pay, same hour, same everything, but extra week of vacation. Love you, Freetown, but I have kids, I might go to Lakeville instead, then we might lose that person or, or that specific role that that person was holding, so.
Mm-hmm.
Just didn't make sense not kind of bringing us up.
And let's call it what it is, the private sector tends to pay more than the side, right? So, you look at it, benefits have to be that much better, right? Like, you, okay, we do good with our health insurance, and there's a lot of things that we do, and I'm not saying we don't pay well, I'm just saying that there is opportunity away from here, that, so, people aren't just coming looking to say, I just wanna work for municipality. They might be looking at a job with us, but then looking at another local business, and so, I, I,
And, and, and don't, keep in mind, this still has to go to town meeting for, for the vote, so, um, this just gets us to the next step.
Yeah, I guess I'm just talking it out, right, like, just what the, the upsides are of it all and why.
I think it's almost the standard now that you get the three weeks, uh, I don't know.
And as we've talked about too, like, you know, CBA, we all just finished a bunch of CBAs this year, but there are some coming up in a few years, right? That, that might change a couple of things here as well, as, as far as what they get. But again, it, it'll be competitive and it'll be in line with everybody, so it's, it still makes sense. So, that said, I entertain the motion to vote on the increase to the amount of vacation time in the personnel bylaw to be voted on at a future town meeting.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that is something that I will bring to the bylaw committee as well, like, cause that was one of the, that is one of the bylaws we're trying to work on.
Makes sense.
Personnel bylaw.
So we have a meeting that we're gonna set the agenda for the twenty-seventh?
I'm not gonna be at that meeting, but, because I'm on vacation.
Look at that.
Yeah, I think you should, you know, cause you're here tonight, you know, I'm in. Thank you, Cheryl.
Alright, so.
Timely manner, huh? Look at that. You have to have the right players in the room.
That's a, that's a, that's a huge one. Love it, love it. Things are getting done, Free Town. We're getting things done. Item agenda sixteen, discussion involved in adding an outreach worker position to the COA funded by a grant that was awarded to the COA, which of course is our council of aging. You have a few words you'd like to say about the grant, while you're here?
So um similar to last time, we talked about the van that we received the twenty-five thousand for. Um, this was part of the same cycle through MCOA, and where I wrote the grant for the van, Kylie wrote this outreach worker. Uh, it was another part of the um there were um categories that you could go out for, and this was another category, um and I thought it'd be cool um that if she wrote it, then maybe it would kinda come to fruition, and I asked if it could cover a salary, and um it could. So that's how this all came about.
Just to give some history, Rebecca and I have been talking about whether we need an outreach worker. Um, we've just, we had, we hadn't defined the lines of, or what that would quite look like. We, because she, she's, you know, because she was new, but yeah, so we were just talking about it and waiting to see. She wanted to spend some time with the COA before we made the definitive decisions and what would work best for the town. So this is like a great opportunity that this grant came, and we can sort of try it out on somebody else's dime.
Yeah.
Um, and it's a, it's a ten thousand dollar grant, so.
Perfect. It makes it all that much better when we don't have to pay for it directly.
And you can see how it works out, and you can tweak it and fine tune it and, and come up, you know, um as it works, and I think the understanding is if it works out, we would then try to fund it at town meeting next year. It doesn't have to be, just depends on how things progress.
Is there another grant? Is this a grant you go apply for every year, or is this something that's a one and done?
So every year, it's, it can be something different. They, they don't really want you to apply for the same thing year after year, so the first year I applied was the nutrition grant, so it funded our Tuesday lunch program. Um, this year, we went out for the outreach and, and the van, money for the van. Uh, next year, I don't know.
Next year, I think we might do something with our site work over there in a park that we wanna do in front of the COA. We wanna do a patio and a sort of a courtyard for the seniors to be able to sit in the sun during the day. In between the pod and the existing building, so we've talked about that, just, uh, uh, we weren't ready yet because the pod isn't here yet, so but that next year, I definitely will work on getting, working with you to get at least maybe piece of that funded.
Perfect.
It's just to skip ahead, it, some people might be thinking, what is an outreach director, outreach worker, right? Essentially, the person uh for this position is gonna be a caregiver or for families and, and offer services such as like helping with forms and with like SNAP or fuel assistance. Um, things that our elder population need more assistance with, because now it's just paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. So this person is there to assist our families in that area, right? And is of course, there's a whole job description and everything else that we will talk about next. Essentially, that's what we're voting on, is that grant for that person to help our residents get better or be better with their, their finances and their care and everything else, because it's so much paperwork, we have to deal with so many different things at the same time. So this person essentially is the bridge and gap for those individuals and their families. Good description, good way to summarize it. So, so this is for ten thousand dollars, that's, that's a good information to get for a year.
So I've been, just so you know, this should be outreach worker. I made a mistake when I put outreach director positions, or just so to clarify, there's a couple, it says outreach worker, and then it says outreach director, it's outreach worker.
On item nineteen, it should be worker.
So just so you have that qualification. I apologize.
Thank you. I would have, I would have read it as, as said. Alright, uh, any additional comments, conversations, or concerns? Great. Alright, let's vote on this. Uh, I entertain the motion to add an outreach worker position at, to the council of aging, COA funded by a grant that was awarded to the council of aging.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda seventeen, discussion of vote whether to approve the outreach worker job description. So I summarized the job description, but the positioning purpose is as read, outreach, outreach worker will educate residents and their families and or caregivers about the programs and services of the Free Town Council of Aging to enhance the lives of the community's older adult population. Position performs responsible administrative, technical, and professional work in managing the coordination of social and home services to the town's older adults. As said, they're the bridge and gap between our elder care and things that they need as far as assistance for forms or technical terms or research, right?
I do see this position working closely with myself, as well as the Board of Health specifically, just to identify people in the community that maybe we're not serving yet, or that we need to do a better job of reaching.
Yeah, cause it's, if you can't rely, I mean, unfortunately, there's situations where they're not gonna come and ask for help. You know, maybe it just gives an opportunity to go like, if we hear about somebody, we can go out, you know, literally outreach.
Probably, I've, I think I've had to file at least six or seven times.
Yeah.
Review since I got here.
Oh, real, wow.
And so some, and that's a long report, so some of that, you know, when I was teaching, uh, Kylie was kind of looking my shoulder, we were reporting on somebody last week. Um, significant financial abuse. So just starting that. Yeah, it's, it's scary, it's out there.
Yeah, our population is growing, right? We have, a third of our population is elderly.
And as you get older, you get more prideful, right? Especially that generation, it's like we're, we're dealing with is, they were a prideful generation, right? Um, they're not gonna come to us for help, right? They, they just, they think they can take it all themselves, but it, so having someone there that kinda helps open that door, it, it makes me, it makes me more comfortable at night knowing that our six is way too many, one's too many. And you've already had six in the year you've been there, so.
That's scary.
That's tough.
That's not a stat you wanna hear, to your point, that's.
But it's, it's being taken care of, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, let's, a glass half full, we're gonna turn it and say, great job, you guys are identifying it, and you're dealing with it, it's just, yeah.
No further discussion, I will entertain the motion to approve the outreach worker job description as written.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda eighteen, discussion of vote whether making the outreach worker on a special municipal employee. Huh, how to word this? So right now, right, we would be putting this on as a, a grant fund position, so this not a would they be considered bylaw employee? I don't, they wouldn't be, right? So that's how, how do, how do I phrase it in the correct way, so that it's like a complete moron on camera? You know what?
Maybe this is just like kind of administrative, just like
Yeah.
Properly articulate the type of position it is, right?
Yeah, well, most employee.
Yeah.
Because if I'm running off of the agenda, you don't, you, you don't vote on making it's kind of funny the way it's worded, outreach worker, it should really say the position of, because if you decide to add to that position, y- you have to you have to vote to make the position itself, whether it's one or more people, everyone becomes a special municipal employee within that title. It's the position, not the person. You just might wanna clarify that in your motion.
And that's, and that's what I was, I was trying to
I was trying to help you out, but I was.
Word it out so that, right, cause there's so many complexities to that special municipal employee title, I guess you would say, right? Uh, I wanna make sure we, we capture that correctly. Deb, can you weigh in on that, number um eighteen? What makes them a special municipal employee, to clarify?
Well, it's, it's just, it's so that they can work uh two jobs, in other words.
Oh, yeah.
It's a conflict of interest, if, you can't hold two positions within the town. So now her, her current position as community program director is only nineteen hours a week. So she can physically work two jobs, but she cannot, through the conflict of interest laws, work two, two positions, it's a conflict of interest. So in order to circumvent that, or I don't wanna say that, I don't wanna say circumvent, but in order to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on, um the outreach workers would be um a special municipal employee. And then um we would have uh an exemption filed by Kylie to um, to exempt her from the conflict of interest law, so that it's not a conflict of interest for her to do both positions.
Yes, but I wouldn't assign it to a person just yet, as, as the position would do.
No, well, no, it's, it's the position that you apply for, for the municipal um employee, it's the outreach worker, so it, it could be anybody in that position, just like we did the dispatch workers uh a couple of months ago, I think we did.
Yeah, the dispatch work, it was the police. So the dispatch workers have been on there for a long time.
And then the ACO is also a special municipal.
For a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be just adding the position to that.
I think we also did this.
I would also encourage whatever employee does get hired for the position to also file a disclosure.
Yeah.
Right. Cause that's two separate things, and then um if you file a disclosure, it doesn't necessarily mean you're covered, it's just putting everyone on notice that you filed that disclosure.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think the only, the only thing you'd have to do for eighteen is just insert the word position after worker, right?
Yeah, yep. Alright, item agenda eighteen, discussion of vote, so we did that, so we'll also vote on it now. I take the motion to make the outreach wer- worker position a special municipal employee.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, for the purpose of this conversation of outreach worker, item agenda nineteen is about pay. So the proposed rate from the grant and hours to be worked, um to make sure that all the funds are used in an appropriate amount of time, is that was rated at twenty-eight dollars per hour for the, for the year.
Sounds good, move.
Yeah, we looked at the average, that's sort of the low end of what the average is being paid for an outreach worker. And, and it works in, you know, I'm working at like eight hours a week at twenty-eight dollars an hour, and there's enough money in the grant to cover it through June thirtieth.
Perfect.
Yeah, no, our, outreach workers, caregivers, they do a lot of paperwork, so it's, they, they should be paid a- accordingly, cause it's a lot of back and forth, a lot of head scratching, eye gouging, back and forth, so. So yes, um twenty-eight dollars seems fair. Um, so that said, I entertain the motion, um paying the outreach worker twenty-eight dollars per hour for that position.
Twenty-eight dollars an hour, yeah.
Twenty-eight dollars an hour.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item agenda twenty, discussion of vote, want to exempt the outreach worker position under section twenty B of the conflict of interest law. So we just discussed that, person in this position should file a, a disclosure and uh to cover them, um but it won't cover them fully, but it will just create the paperwork needed to know that you've, we've done the right thing, you've done the right thing, and um exempting you from different things. So, does that cover everything? No, they never do, but that's why, that's why you can file more, right Cheryl? As many as you want.
I encourage people to do so.
Correct.
There are a multitude of, of disclosure forms, it depends on the unique situation, so it's not a one fits all, depending on the specific situation.
Yeah, and they're great up at that state, they'll tell you which one to fill out and which one to print out and.
State Ethics Commission, the attorney of the day, I have those on my little leaflets that I hand, I just handed out to today, so.
The, the attorney of the day, I remember having to call him a couple of times right at the beginning, so.
We've had many discussions over the years. So, that said, um, no further con- uh discussion, I entertain the motion to exempt the outreach worker position under section twenty B of the conflict of interest law.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Moving along, item agenda twenty-one, discussion of vote on appointing Kylie Batallo as the outreach worker effective September first twenty twenty four through June thirtieth twenty twenty five for up to sixteen hours per pay cycle. So for those watching at home, our pay cycle is every two weeks, so everyone knows, um, but yeah, Kylie's been doing, uh, she's, Kylie, as you know, is our community program director, she has put on some pretty good events, some good reviews, some good food and ice cream and all that good stuff, and uh this is one of those things that when interviewing Kylie, it was, you know, it was known that um she was there for the elder population to help out and everything else, so this is a write-up rally. Um, so very happy to see that your name is on this, on this list, or on this um agenda item.
And that's her background, her education is in public health, and her background is in this, so that is one of the reasons why she is a good fit for this position.
And she's been working with Rebecca already hand in hand, right? As we just, we, you just alluded to before, right, that she was over your shoulder.
Our office is a butt. She also has a very strong um healthcare background, so she's been working in assisted living for the past six years. Um, working with the memory care population, and she, she carries a very strong skill set when it comes to the population, so I think she's an excellent candidate.
That's great.
And her grant rating is.
One for one, at least I know about, right?
So, um, in this, obviously, that's, this is completely separate, but down the road, will we have to create a job description? Because after we run out of the grant funding, will we have to re?
So I, you create, you, you approve the job description, it will go on the um.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, that's stupid to me.
It'll go on the bylaw as, uh, it'll go on the town meeting floor as a bylaw to approve uh adding the position to our bylaw employees. I did speak to town council, who said it's fine if you do that after the fact, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be created, because it's just something you've felt like you needed, you have the right to do that, we'll just add it to the bylaw, so I've already kinda threw it on my not to forget to put it on the October um town meeting, which might go hand in hand with the vacation time, sort of. I think that whole bylaw needs to be revamped, revamped, I don't know if we'll get it done before uh October of town meeting, but there's a lot of things in the personnel bylaw as it sits that need to be um corrected.
The good thing is it doesn't have to go to the AG's office for that, so that'll be a quick turnaround if it does get.
But you know, there's things that, it talks about a chart, there's no longer a chart, that got voted out, but the, the language alluding to the chart didn't get changed, so there's a lot of nuances about that bylaw that really need to be fixed. In addition to, e- every year, we've updated it and changed it and added positions, so we need to really revamp that. So hopefully, we can get that done, but I don't know, we'll try.
We all just got appointed today, so, reappointed to the bylaw committee, so. Get started on it. Alright, now, so any other further discussions or concerns? Alright, that said, I entertain the motion, appointing Kylie Batallo as the outreach worker effective September first twenty twenty four to June thirtieth twenty twenty five for up to sixteen hours per pay cycle.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congrats.
Keep doing what you're doing, everybody.
Yeah, both of you, thank you.
Alright, item agenda twenty-two, discussion of vote, want to hire a town planner or land use administrator. So for those that keep track of Town Hall webpage, we currently have a, we have a position out right now, right? We've, we have, in fact, I have a stack of names of people that have applied already. So the question is, do we continue with the land use administrator or a town planner? Due to the fact we have essentially millions of dollars in grants that need to be not taken care of, but in a sense tracked and monitored, make sure that they're, we're meeting every milestone in WICIT to make sure we don't fall out of compliance and then owe the full grant back because of paperwork. Something we don't need. So the question is, do we, that was essentially uh our land use administrator. Um, and now we have the opportunity of continuing the way we're doing it, or creating the town planner? I guess along with a land use administrator in a sense, right?
Uh, uh, we wouldn't need both. Um, I just think a, a town planner would come more seasoned than a land use administrator. Um, we've already advertising the land use administrator position, I'd like to be able to advertise the town planner position, because it's very competitive field, it's difficult to get help in that field. Uh, but you never know, there may be that person that's traveling, and then they go, Free Town's closer to home, and this would be a good opportunity for them, so um I'd almost like to advertise them simultaneously. This would be a good opportunity for them, so um I'd almost like to advertise them simultaneously and see what I get for talent. So you know, and hire the best for the job, because we, we do over the last two years, we have got a lot of projects moving. We have a lot of stuff going on, having done all of the planning that we need to do with the ADA. Self evaluation transition plan and the open space plan that was done as uh the open space committee uh had completed. The master plan that's in process that will be done, probably, you know, in the next six to nine months. Um the hazard mitigation plan, all of these things set us up to get these grant funds. Right, and we've gotten grants, we got the ADA grant to redo the bathrooms at the town hall. It it's now, we're ready to roll now that these, these things are in place, and I I need somebody seasoned that can probably pick that ball up and run with it. I worked closely with um Victoria uh in um the planning department, because my background is planning. I just think, I I have my own grants that I'm working on through the board of selectmen's office, and I. I just am concerned that I'm not gonna be able to carry both departments in terms of the grant piece of it. But I definitely can't do any of the planning piece and the conservation piece, that's, that, not that I can't do it, I just don't have time to do it. Um so I'm I'm looking for somebody, if there's somebody that we can get that has the talent to hit the ground running. Um and keep all of these projects, we've been working on the four corners.
Right.
Um we have worked on the South Main Street Bridge, which is is my grant, but I need a planner to to coordinate with. We've got the sewer line extension that we're working on, um that also should be a planner involved. There's just so many projects that the town uh has moving that. Uh we, I think we need somebody that has the experience to keep these projects moving.
Oh, I agree, it's, this is a lot of moving parts, there's, there's a lot of balls in the air right now. And very easy to drop those balls, right, because of this, of the moving parts. And if that happens, where we could be on the hook for large sums of money, right, at different levels, and we don't want that. So having someone making sure they're tracking it, other than Deb, cause she's busy with her own million things in the air, right, because helping run, help run the town here. Um putting out for both, see the kind of talent, I think you're right, I think to see. It's like essentially what we're doing, when we're doing the finance director, we're looking for one of those, what's out there, what what can we get, and who's available. And that was a tough, tough market, we may find the same thing here, but we won't know until we try.
Um I think, I mean, I think we're getting some good applications, but I'd like to see, you know.
And I also think that what. Town planner, to your point, will come in and should be, you know, kinda turnkey, ready to go. We had a land use administrator that was doing a lot of this stuff. But you were the one who helped guide her, right, and I think that. Down the road, you don't have time, and you'd rather focus, and you know, we, we as a board and a town would rather have you focus on other things away from this. And then the a town planner could also know of stuff that's coming up, so you're not having to say, hey, what about this, or what about that, you know, they're just, you know, it's. We're just talking about, you got this grant, and you you know that grant, and you're gonna run after it every year, and you know your angle, and so. I mean, I, to me, it's, I understand exactly why we're doing what we're doing, and I couldn't agree with it more. And if we get, you know, if we get a town planner, that's good, great, if we get a land use administrator, then.
And I think I've said this before, I mean, Kevin Desmaris, as the chair of the board for many years. Really uh kept the planning board and that department running, but he left the board. I don't know if a year or two years ago, right, so um. Which it worked because he was in the town hall, he was there every day, it's not the same now, we don't have the same. Or was that, he he was super knowledgeable, right, kept the board going, so um I, and we've. We've created a land use department that I don't think was there two or three years ago. We had like a clerk that just did their meetings and their agendas, now we have a full blown department. With a clerk, they're managing many projects, all on their own, they they're, they're handling three departments, don't forget. Which is a lot, planning, conservation and zoning, that's a lot, um so we need somebody who can can keep them all going in the right direction.
As far as costs, I know for the the hawks, the budget hawks at home, um. The pays, you know, like anything else, it's within the amount of money that we pay people at town halls. It's not like they're getting fifty dollars an hour, you know, it's, we don't know yet. We we're, that's, we know what the land use administrator makes, right, cause that was just negotiated through the CBA, um however.
Yeah.
You know, based on experience and other things, you know, so it's just, that's tough, you don't wanna, you.
Yeah. A lot of people want to hear what, want to pay right away, but we don't know what's there, we we don't know, we know what other towns pay.
Be similar to other department.
Yeah, it's gotta be similar, and that's.
I would say into our department head range, you know.
Right.
It has to be if you're gonna attract talent.
Right. No, I think we we pursue, we go forward, in my, in my opinion, I think we go forward and see what's out there, and then uh like any hiring decision, cause we fought this board again. Alright, for the appointment.
Sounds good.
Any concerns, discussions, alright, and that said, I entertain the motion to. Hire a town planner or land use administrator as required.
So yeah, so this, the motion there is to post both of them, yeah.
Post both of them, yeah, discussions, yeah, I entertain the motion to post a town planner and land use administrator.
Position.
Position.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks, back to me, I think we're just signing and then closing, right? It's cold in here, I think it's a good thing, I'm exhausted, I think, I think the cold air kept me up. Baby's great. Not quite walking, but he's cruising, he's getting close. I feel like I've heard the boys are, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure if they walk, do they walk later? It's just, boys are slower and everything.
They all go and they, they all get there where they need to go, trust me.
Yeah.
Um I think they're digging up, they're milling some Bay Shore roads tomorrow, just so you know.
I know how Luanne likes it, so she doesn't hit me.
Maybe got one approved. We only have like twenty seven more to go. Every meeting just put like two on, we might get them done by June of twenty five.
Just you and I. It's like, am I signing this, like, no, this is just from the agenda. All signed, alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.